The House will come to order. Recognize the member from Fillmore, Representative Davids.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I've moved to take House File 1 off the table.
Representative Davids moves to take House File 1 off the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. Members, we now have House File 1 before us. We are on final passage. The member from Hennepin, Representative Loeffler? Or should I start a new list?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That's fine. Just briefly, I want to say that while there are good things in this bill, but it's still an extra-large bill, and it's too big and unbalanced for me to support it at this time. There's no increase in the working family tax credit for all the 375,000 people, 12% of our population, who currently get it. There's no increase in direct property tax relief to homeowners and renters, even though we know property taxes will be going up. And there's inadequate funding of local government aid and county program aid. It focuses away from the biggest tax programs that benefit almost all of our taxpayers in order to reward special targeted groups. Businesses get their property taxes frozen, a benefit that will lower their property taxes not just now, but into the future. But do our homeowners and our renters and everyone else? Nope, they don't get a freeze, and they don't get $1 of increase in the renters' credit or the homestead credit. They're going to see higher property tax bills, I believe, because after two years with no increase in our support to cities and counties, taxes went up $700 million. This bill provides an additional $50 million, $15 million to cities and $25 to counties, and that's good. But the economic pressures that are driving property taxes are difficult. I think that this bill is being offered at a time of real economic uncertainty, when there are serious proposals at the federal government to take billions away from basic state services, and I don't think that this bill prioritizes enough the hard-working residents of our district, and I'd love to see a better balanced bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Recognize the member from Blue Earth, Representative Considine.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Chair Davids. It has been a long four years to get the sales tax for Mankato and North Mankato, and I appreciate your shepherding it through.
The member from Rice, Representative Blythe.
Thank you, Speaker. And I agree with the author of the bill and with the co-author. Mark, there are some good provisions in the bill. It does have some bipartisan things, and the farmer credit is something that I, a bill I carried myself at one time, and I know the author carried it. And the tax provisions to help school districts be able to pass levies is important, although I think it needs to be recognized that there are times when some of those landowners are absentee landowners, and I'm not necessarily certain that the, although it does help out some farmers, there are others that get help that maybe make it more difficult. But it's important to recognize that that is a shift of that tax liability to other taxpayers, as the state is going to help take care of that. It's a worthy cause. I think it's important that rural schools have the money to do the things they need to do. But I'm worried by the size of the tax bill and how that will make it possible for us to, in the future, be able to pay for the things that we need. Now, I know there's division about whether or not we need government and whether or not we need the things that are provided for. But when we shift things around and we move the cost of government or the cost of the taxes to one group to another, and when we take the tax liability off the tobacco companies and we put it on other folks, that's a problem. And, you know, the American Revolution happened because a corporation demanded from the King of England, the tea company, the East Indies Tea Company, that they have tax relief. And they got that tax relief. And what did the King of England do? He taxed the colonists in what is now the United States. And he did that because he could. And a lot of people don't realize that the reason that the Boston Tea Party happened is because Americans recognized this corporation got a special deal, and they were going to respond to that. And they did. And I think it's important for us to understand that it's not just taxes that they were rebelling against, but the fact that those taxes were shifted unfairly to them. And I think it's important that we recognize that the amendments that Representative Lashford brought forward and others brought forward are important for us to think about, that when we're going to shift the payments of taxes that give us the things that we need in our government, to make sure government can provide and provide us with an economy that works and works for everyone, that we pay attention to that. So unfortunately, I cannot support this bill, even though there are some good provisions, and I thank the author for bringing it forward.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Murphy E.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. I came in, like everybody else, yesterday at 3:00 in the afternoon to begin to do the last work of this session. And when we put this bill up on the floor, I guess that was yesterday as well, it was at 12:45, I stood for about 40 minutes to be recognized while we waited some more before we actually started to engage in debate on the bill. I know that this is the top and chief priority for the majority in the House. It is a far larger tax-cutting bill than I think we can afford here in the state of Minnesota. We've, you know, just dug ourselves out of a decade's worth of deficits. We know that history. Lori Sturdivan just wrote about it again. And we are, you know, unfortunately racing through to a conclusion here, just like we did a year ago and two years before, a year before that. I checked, as I was getting ready to speak, the schedule or the bills that are posted. I know I'm supposed to be talking about the tax bill right now, but there are a number of bills that we need to look at that we haven't seen yet. They're not posted for our review. The transportation bill just got posted. You don't know when we're going to see the Health and Human Services bill, but the spreadsheet for the Health and Human Services bill wasn't ready until 20 minutes after midnight, and the language will be much later. So I think it would do all of us well to take a deep breath and stop trying to blame each other for why we're here, as I think we all have a hand in it, and part of it was an overly ambitious one-day special session to try and cram so much work through this body and through the staff who are doing absolutely miraculous work trying to get what we need to get done for the people of Minnesota. So I think we should stop blaming each other and focus on what we need to get done for the people of Minnesota. I'm not going to vote for this bill because it's too big. It sets us up for deficits in the future, Representative Davids, and I don't know why we'd want to do that. Thank you.
The member from Sherburne, Representative Knoblock.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. You know, here we are. I didn't plan to speak in the dark of the night on this bill, but one of the unintended consequences of working with the administration for hours today is that the time that we had to consider this bill got pushed back into the early morning hours like this. And, you know, members, I've been around here a long time. I've seen bills that I felt were not ready for prime time. I've seen bills that I thought, you know, might have put us on some sort of slippery slope toward great difficulties as a state. But this is not that bill. You know, members, this bill is a great bill. It's got things for, it's got relief for people on Social Security who are older, got tax relief of student loan debt for people that are young, got help for people in rural areas and cities, farmers, property taxpayers, income taxpayers. This bill is a bill that's got it all. It's got belts and suspenders. You know, members, there's even something in here for the Department of Revenue. You know, it's got additional enforcement tools in here for the Department of Revenue so that, you know, they'll have the tool they need in their toolbox to be able to collect the revenue that we need to collect as a state to have the services that we need. So, members, I hope that we can all come together on this bill at this hour and have a great, big, beautiful green board, and, yes, have peace in the valley.
Further discussion on House File 1. Any further discussion? The author, the member from Fillmore, Representative Davids.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Let's get back to what the bill actually does here. This bill gives farmers relief with the ag bond credit. It gives seniors relief with Social Security reductions in what they have to pay taxes, students with the 529 plans. And Representative Loeffler, there is working family credit language in here, and there will be more people that will be able to benefit from that program. And first in the nation, it's known as the Greg David Student Debt Relief Plan. I do have to say, for some people, they're saying the bill's too big, but yet you didn't put enough in LGA, you didn't put enough in CPA, you didn't put enough here, here, and here. We can't do that on small bills. And it's not too big. It's not too big a bill. I wish it was much, much larger. Local government, I would suggest, Representative Loeffler, you go out and talk to the folks at the counties. They can't believe what's happening here. $25.5 million, their formula changes, plus ICWA, plus SFIA, plus the, what's the other one? Repairian aid. Repairian aid. So the counties have over $50 million, but it's not enough. They told me it was. They said it was more than enough. The SFIA situation was bland in five counties. Five counties that could lose millions and millions of dollars if this bill doesn't pass and if it's not signed into law by Governor Dayton. Small business relief. I was in Big Bob's in Spring Valley having breakfast the other day, solving all the problems of the world, as we do every morning, and the proprietor brought out her property tax statement. If this bill passes, she will save 35% on her property tax. So don't tell me that's nickels and dimes. It's thousands of dollars. At Big Bob's, you should stop by sometime. Great restaurant. They close at 1:00, they're open at 4:00 in the morning. And I must say this. The sun is coming up. This bill was not passed in the dark of night in a smoke-filled room with high-priced lobbyists. The sun is shining. Vote for this bill, and the sun will shine all over the great state of Minnesota. Vote green.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. The clerk will close the roll. Applebaum votes nay. Hilstrom votes nay. There being 102 ayes and 31 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. There's a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Loon moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 2 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Loon, to explain the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is my motion, that we can take up House File 2, the Education Omnibus Appropriations Bill. So I would move that the rules of the House be suspended and given its second and third readings.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to declare an urgency signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 2.
Second reading. I'll recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Loon, who will explain the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Well, this is, again, as I mentioned, House File 2. It is the Education Omnibus Bill. This funds everything that we do in Minnesota within the education arena, from early childhood through grades K through 12. I am really, really pleased to be able to present this bill to you. This has been a session's worth of hard work, but through, I think, great bipartisan compromise, all with the focus on doing what is in the best interests of our children and making sure that our schools are strong, that they are funded, that they are held to high standards, that they are doing everything that they can to close the achievement gap, and that we continue to innovate and create new programs and ideas and strategies for making sure that every child in Minnesota has a bright future because they are given the education that they deserve. And I think this is the bill that will help us ensure that we are keeping our commitment, our constitutional duty, and our promise to the children that we are here to serve through this bill. I'm going to talk just really quickly about some of the changes from the Conference Committee report that passed through this body earlier in May, and then just highlight a couple of those provisions. So as you may recall, when we were doing this bill a few weeks ago, we were at about $303 million over base. The bill that we're presenting, I'm presenting to you now, is $483 million over base. And the vast majority of that money is dedicated to putting money on the per pupil formula. This is money that funds every child in every school, public school across the state of Minnesota. We're at 2% and 2% on that formula. That results in a per pupil aid increase of $245 per every child in a public school in Minnesota. And I'm very, very pleased that we were able to do that. We've also got some increased funding for early learning, $70 million in new funding, to be specific, some new money for scholarships. We have a new mixed delivery program through our public schools, something we're calling School Readiness Plus. And then we have the VPK or Voluntary Pre-K. So all of those options are here within this bill. Schools will have an opportunity to apply for $50 million over these, this new biennium that will be starting July 1st for early childhood programs. They will have their choice of School Readiness Plus or VPK. So whatever works best for that district and the department will review those applications. They will look at poverty concentrations in those schools to make sure that we're targeting dollars where they are needed most to achieve kindergarten readiness. They will also look at how schools, this is new this year and within this bill, how schools are doing in terms of reaching out to community partners to really enhance a mixed delivery system. We heard some testimony in committee throughout this session about some frustration with community providers who had childcare settings, preschool programs, and that some of the school districts with new pre-K or VPK programs were not really coordinating well, and it was causing difficulties in closing or causing contraction in our childcare providers. So these applications are now going to get more points for doing a better job of outreach and mixed delivery. I think that'll be a good step forward. We've also got a couple of changes in our scholarship program, again, to enhance, ensure more parent choice, and also helping to ensure we're getting more providers into our quality rating system, our parent-aware system, so that what parents who are empowered with a scholarship for their early learners will have a variety of providers to choose from. We definitely want to make sure that they have choices, because that's very important for our children and our parents, as they seek the setting that works best for their child. We have the teacher licensure bill. We heard that separately on the House floor, and it would allow, if Representative Erickson wants to get up and talk about that, I would certainly encourage her to do that. But I just want to thank her for all of her hard work on that. As you know, it did meet with a veto, but the bill has had a few tweaks made to it. And the other concern of the governor, that the policy was not married to the funding for creating this new governance structure for teacher licensure, that has all been addressed. The policy and the funding for it are all embodied within this bill. And I think it's, when we had our sort of hearing or working group walkthrough earlier tonight, last night, Senator Pratt noted that this is the first really major reform we've done of teacher licensure in the state of Minnesota in 40 years. And it's been a very strong bipartisan effort, and I just want to congratulate Representative Erickson for her enormous, enormous task that she took on and all the hard work in that. As I mentioned, we worked hard to reach agreements with the governor. We obviously met and were a meeting of the minds on the formula, as I mentioned, the VPK issue and providing, again, another option, enhancing choice, and targeting those dollars. The commissioner was, I think, really thoughtful in coming up with this idea, knowing that it was important to many of us, that we are first looking to reach those children most in need with these early learning dollars, because that's how we get the return on our investment by helping to close that achievement gap. We've increased funding for tribal schools, and I know that's been a concern. So with the increased target we have, tribal schools will be getting another $3.728 million in the biennium, as was proposed in the governor's budget. The Purpatch Center, the Purpatch Center for the Arts, you know, we've all been concerned with the very disturbing OLA report about the problems at Purpatch. There's been some effort by the governor to replace board members and sort of affect a turnaround there. I think we will have to wait and see how those work out. So we are going to give that an opportunity to work, but we are embedding some reforms within this bill to try to help make sure that these deficiencies that were noted in the audit will be corrected. So we are adding the Commissioner of Education to the Board of Purpatch as an ex officio member. So right now, the Board is 15 members. There will be 16, and the commissioner will be that 16th ex officio member. We are also increasing reporting requirements for Purpatch. We're asking them to publish all their board meeting minutes on their website and make those public and some other reforms. So, and I actually think we'll probably be doing some more oversight hearings in the coming year, next session, about this, to follow very closely what is happening at Purpatch, and that they are making good reforms and that they're taking hold so that we don't have the situation that unfortunately brought us to have some very serious discussions about the future of this arts agency and the school that it operates. Another $1.3 million for the state academies, as these are the academies that serve children who are visually or hearing impaired, and very pleased to be able to do that. They deserve it, and we're glad we have the money to do it. A little increase for the department so they can buy a new computer mainframe. We know that their system's very old, and they need this, so they will be receiving that funding. And then just a couple of policy things, and I know that they're important to the governor as they are to all of us, lead in drinking water in our schools. None of us would like to think that our children are going to school and ingesting lead in their drinking waters. So schools are going to be required to test, to have a testing program, and to report on that, and to make sure that those problems are remediated, and that's important that we do that. Representative Bennett has brought us Aaron's Law, which would allow schools to incorporate into their curriculum and instruction and discussion with children about how, hopefully, to, that they can trust the adults in school if they perhaps are being subject to sexual abuse. And we certainly want to do all we can to help prevent that. So with that, members, I would be remiss, I didn't mention that all of the other provisions that were in the Conference Committee report in House File 890 were retained, mental health grants, some pupil transportation adjustments in that, career and technical consortium grants, all of those things were embodied. So if you were in the House File 890 report and had a project in there, it's in this bill as well. And some important reforms, as I've talked about, the compensatory revenue, the new money will go towards extended time for struggling students to really, again, more narrowly focus on the achievement gap. And finally, we are retaining the language from House File 890, the LIFO provision. So moving forward, unrequested leave of absence will be restored to the responsibility of schools and local bargaining units to determine their policy on that. So we've had a state statutory fallback that will come out of the state statute, and so all local schools will have a process that they negotiate, and I think that's how it should be. So it's an important policy, and I think this change is actually going to help us to attract and retain new teachers. So with that, members, I think we have reached, again, a really great compromise. There are things here that I think we can all be very proud of, very supportive of, and I would very much ask for your green vote.
There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Loon and Dabney move to amend House File Number 2 as follows. The amendment is coded A17-0531.
Recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Loon, to introduce your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Well, despite reviewing this bill, I think, three times in whole before we sent it to the printer tonight, we did notice that one of the numbers did not, was not correct. So this is simply a technical correction. Again, page 11, line 17, this pupil transportation adjustment program, so for school districts that have excess pupil transportation costs, we've got some money in there, but it is the 46. the 46 is incorrect, it should be 18.2, and so that is what the amendment does. I would ask for your support.
Discussion on the Loon Amendment. The member from Hennepin, Representative Hortman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I, I just want to note that you've asked me to consent to this technical amendment, which I, I find funny because I asked for our leads to be involved in the negotiations. I asked to be present in the negotiations. We have absolutely, my caucus has absolutely nothing to do with the content of this bill. And now you want to know if I agree to some technical amendment? What does it matter? You're going to do what you're going to do. I just had to note the utter absurdity of the request.
Sorry for being considerate. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the adoption of the Loon Amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no.
No!
The motion prevails, and the amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 2, as amended.
Third reading. Discussion on the bill. The member from Mille Lacs, Representative Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members. First of all, I want to say a thank you to Representative Loon and her team. And keep in mind, members, that almost every bill in this, or every section in this House File 2 has been heard in committee, either in my committee or in Finance Committee. There are no surprises in here, so if you've been tracking us all along the way, indeed, you have been made well aware of what's in this proposal. But Representative Loon has worked tirelessly with her team to produce what I think is just an outstanding finance policy bill. I also want to thank House Research, Commissioner Casalias, with whom we have worked, members on both sides of the aisle, partisan staff, stakeholders. Members, when you put together a policy bill that also has a major reform, as Representative Loon noted, there hasn't been major reform to the way we license teachers or govern that system in 40 years. And so this is historic, and this was needed, and I know that many of you agreed that we should reach that point. I also want to thank my team and how tirelessly they have worked, especially on teacher licensure. Members, as you know, the licensure piece, and it's in two different articles in this proposal, was vetoed by the governor. He sent a veto letter, of course, to the Speaker, to the desk, to me, and we took it very seriously. And I've only had to make two changes in that vetoed message. Those changes were to Tiers 1 and 2, where we incorporated cultural competency as part of professional development, and for Tier 1, that cultural competency, as well as content, has to be studied and achieved for that candidate during their initial year of licensure. In, the other modification was to Tier 3, where we eliminated the coursework that if you passed all the tests, you could become a licensed teacher in Tier 3. So those were the only two changes that we made in the end. We had discussions with the commissioner, you know, she, she brought forth some other issues, but in the end, last night, she just decided that we could keep this as simple as we could and as understandable as, as possible. As you know, this is compromise among the Senate, the House, and the executive branch, and I'm very pleased that we have reached this point. Members, in policy, we have the ESA provision that has been reduced to just requesting, I shouldn't say just, it's big, requesting that legislators in the education committees be able to review the ESA plan in at least 30 days before it's submitted, and the commissioner has suggested that we meet sometime in July to review that. And the only other part that is still in this file is the fact that we are focusing on the world's best workforce and encouraging her to follow that great plan that was adopted primarily by the DFL in 2013. So that's in the bill, and a special audit that needed to have some changes made, which were done in government operations. I appreciate Representative O'Driscoll's staff in noting that. And so that is an important item that's been added because we do want the department auditing districts, knowing that they are doing everything legally and according to our statutes. But members, in review, this is really a bill that is so good for all three of those persons with whom we write our legislation. And of course, this is very strong for teachers. We have the licensure, but we have Grow Your Own programs, other alternative programs. We have agricultural educator grants. We have a statewide concurrent enrollment proposal here that will actually train teachers through the statewide program that was formerly the Northwest Regional Partnership. We have teacher shortage loan forgiveness, which I think Representative Loon already mentioned, but a lot of strength for teachers to improve, to be motivated, to, to really go into our classrooms and do the best job that they possibly can because we have put so many opportunities in their hands. And we hope that those from out of state or who are in our state who want to become teachers are motivated by our new system of tiers. Certainly, we hope that those in Tier 1 will want to move into Tier 2, Tier 3, and someday even be a part of a Tier 4. It's a fantastically well-written system. As you know, that whole section of law has been revised, and I am so grateful to nonpartisan staff for the work that they have done to bring this about. And you know, in the tax bill that was just passed, there is a credit for earning a master's degree. So I think we are really addressing the ways that teachers can improve their skills and move forward into our classrooms to be the excellent deliverers of knowledge and skill that we want them to be. And of course, our students are our center point, increasing achievement. I'm not going to read to you all the, the different provisions we have in the bill, but we have some new and some continuations, but they all address the fact that our students want to learn, and we want them to grow in their learning and to achieve at the highest rate possible for them. Finally, we empower parents. Senator Pratt has, in this proposal, personal learning plans to ensure that students who are not reading at level in grades 1, 2, 3, maybe even in kindergarten, can have their needs addressed in a special way through a suggested personal learning plan. It's not a mandate, but it is certainly a way to help those struggling readers so that we know that as they move into 4th grade, they're ready. We have the addition of a rural career technical education consortium that Senator Weber brought forth that looks very exciting. It'll be done through Educational Service Co-op, and we really look to that to be a way to answer the needs of those students who want to be in the career and technical path. We also have available for empowering our parents, as you know, the, the new program called the School Readiness Plus, the Early Learning Scholarships. We have increases there, and I'd remiss, be remiss if I didn't also repeat what Representative Loon said. Purpatch High School, Purpatch Center for the Arts Education remains intact, but we have placed some accountability in this proposal that we think is really going to bring forth a better foundation for those students who want to pursue those arts specialties through this high school that is named, and this art center that's named after our former and late Governor Rudy Purpatch and his dear wife Lola. So with that, members, I can stand for some questions if you like, but I hope we can see a lot of green votes up on the board because this indeed is a bill that addresses the needs of our teachers, our students, and empowers our parents. Thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Mariani.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Good morning. Buenos dias. Members, these bills, K-12 bills, are almost always big bills. They're complex bills, they're difficult to put together. It's a testament to anyone on either side of the body that can bring forth a cohesive, big, complex bill. But, you know, it's what our children deserve, and it is, of course, if not the most important thing, one of the most important things that we do as a body to ensure high-quality, truly accessible, equitable, public education for our students in our state. I just want to quickly run through a few things on this bill. I want to quickly do some nods of, of a few things, then also express some concerns that, that I have. One, right off the bat, I, I do want to acknowledge the importance of the cultural competency requirements that are embedded into four tiers. This is the kind of work that we have to do as a people as our state continues to greatly diversify, to make sure that we're embedding in our, all our public practices, and quite frankly, our private sector is doing this as well, the skills necessary to, to work effectively across race and culture and linguistic and economic categories, as well as geographic I also want to, I don't think Representative Erickson mentioned this, but I, I do want to quickly point out the restoration of the ACT lang, the ACT test access for low-income kids. We're moving, we moved really strongly to provide that universally for all students in our state. I think we've unwisely backed off of that universal approach. We then moved even further by saying that we would reimburse the test expenses of low-income students, basically requiring them to front that. Well, you know what would have happened? Students would not have been able to front it and probably would not be able to take the test. So this at least moves away from the reimbursement and offers to cover that upfront for those students. That's a good thing, members. There are good provisions here on the teacher of color efforts, but I want to really set a, a word of caution. You know, with 3% of our entire teaching corps in the state being teachers of color or American Indian teachers, it's going to take a way bigger effort than what we have in this bill to get us to anything that, that looks like the percentage of those students in our public schools, which are now a little north of 30%. Just to get to 10% of those teachers at, at the rate of investments that we have here, I'm not saying don't invest, it's good to invest, but at this rate, you know, it'll take us a half a century to get to just 10%. We really have to step this up. So good things here with that, but also deep concerns about the pace of, of change and the, and the level of commitment and understanding the depth of the challenge before us. I do think that the tier system approach is a smart approach for us to do in this state. The legislative auditor recommended, we seriously look at that. And so I'm glad that we're moving in that direction, but like anything else, you know, the devil's always going to be in the details, right? And so I think that, well, one, I just want to share a few concerns on some elements of the tier approach. I do have, and I think we have to watch this, in the Tier 1 approach, particularly the, the language, which I think we shouldn't have, frankly, that accepts, prevents certain Tier 1 applicants, successful applicants, to be part of collective bargaining units is really, at very least, something we should watch, at the very most, something we shouldn't do at this point. I get it for CTEs, teachers, but one of my concerns is that with that wider gate of coming into the profession at Tier 1, it's probably where we're going to draw a lot of teachers of color, American Indian teachers into the profession, and we're drawing them into arguably an economic situation where they're going to get paid less, have less protections than folks who are part of those collective bargaining units in the, in the upper tiers. So I am concerned about that. I'm also concerned that we still don't have teacher prep requirements in the Tier 3 license. Representative Erickson, I had hoped that the House provision would have prevailed on that, and quite frankly, Senator Pratt is just dead wrong on this issue, and he prevailed on this. I know he was quite stubborn about that, but the House really did have the superior position on this. And, and it's very unfortunate that, that, that second to the highest tier is one that you can enter into it without a teacher prep program requirement. And so there are provisions in the tier system that do concern our teachers, many of our organized teachers in the state. I suspect that we're going to be visiting this issue again in the near future. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the unrequested leave of absence provision, the so-called LIFO provision. Frankly, I don't think it's needed in this bill. It's really an invitation and kind of, you know, you know, thumbing, you know, putting our thumb in the eye of, of organized teachers and teachers who have been in the system for many years. It really adds nothing, I believe, of goodwill to this bill. I really wish that it had not been here. We had that debate separately, which was a wise thing to do, and we had the governor speak on that issue separately, which was a wise thing to do, and to sort of, you know, embed it and kind of mask it and hide it in a big bill like this, I don't think is, is a, is a good approach. Let me just, two more points, and then I'll, I'll be sitting. One is that I think, one way to think about this bill and the investment that it calls for, for our most precious asset, which is, of course, our, our young people, is really to think about it in terms of opportunities. And I've been here for a while, and I don't know if we're going to be in the same spot again where we're going to have the kind of opportunity that we had at the beginning of this session, and I suppose we could argue this in the other appropriation bills, but with a $1.6 billion projected surplus, we really had an opportunity to do, to make some really quantum leaps in terms of, of the kind of things that we invest in for our children. Don't get me wrong, this bill is stronger in many ways than it was when we saw it in the previous session, but the point is that we have opportunity to do so much more. And just in the VPK, for instance, we know there are over 13, almost 14,000 young children right now who are on waiting lists for VPK. And quite frankly, I was stunned with the geographic disparity of that. The bulk of that, over 9,000, are out in greater Minnesota. The next largest group, 3,500, are in the The next largest group, 3,500, are in the Twin Cities suburban communities, and then 500 on the waiting list in Minneapolis and St. Paul. We're going to be able to get at some of that, you know, with the investments here, but certainly not to be able to do, to be able to match up with the expressed desire of families with their young children right now. And we can agree or disagree on the approach, you know, with the school readiness plus, I think it's got some good features to it. But with that $1.6 billion projected surplus, we could have taken that, took in that, and, yeah, it's getting late, or getting early. We could have taken that and really matched up that immediate desire and reality that families have right now in Minnesota. So it really is, in my mind, a lost opportunity. Let me close by saying that I will vote for this bill. I think it moves in the right direction. I don't do so without some strong concerns, many of which I shared with you. I do think there are some legitimate, legitimate issues that teachers are bringing forward in some of the aspects that are present in the tier licensing system. I also think, again, that the LIFO provision really should not be in this bill. And so I will be voting for this bill. We had, we have the means to do so much more, and there's no other constituent in our state that deserves us doing much more than our young people. And so I wish that the bill we have before us was taking a bigger piece of what we had projected in our state. The governor certainly came in with a very strong investment position. I wish we were doing that bill here today. But with that, members, I will be voting for this bill, and I look forward to hearing the rest of the comments here today.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Davney.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning. I recognize, members, we've only got about an hour left in this special session per the agreement, so I don't want to drag things out, but I do want to spend a little bit of time reviewing this session and this bill and the sharp contrast between what the children and families of Minnesota need and what this bill delivers. I would remind you that in February, when Governor Dayton released his budget, he put $713 million increase into E-12 education. He made a significant investment proposal into early childhood education. He proposed the 2% on the formula each year that he was successful in achieving here in this bill through negotiations. You'll recall that when the vetoed K-12 bill left the floor, it was at 1.5% finally. But he also looked more broadly. He looked at the students with special education needs, a growing population in our schools, and put additional money in there. He looked at where Minnesota ranks, near the bottom in the number of school counselors to students. And he recognized that as we rank in school counselors to students, we also rank in achievement gap. And maybe, just maybe, there's a connection there. And so he proposed more funding for school counselors. And then he started to compromise, and to compromise, and to come down on what Minnesota needs, and to come down on what Minnesota needs until we're left with this bill. And what I'm really concerned about, members, is that this bill breaks the longstanding, hard-fought, hard-secured bipartisan consensus to strategically focus on our youngest learners to close the achievement gap. With the passage of this bill, we'll be saying we just can't commit ourselves to doing the long and hard work of investing in Minnesota's early learning children to close the achievement gap. The early childhood scholarships get more funding. There's two pillars that stand underneath the early learning scholarships. When they were introduced, it was quality. Parents would know they were getting a quality opportunity for their child, and the state would assure that by only being willing to pay for quality care and parental choice. Both of those pillars are undermined in this bill. The pathway to scholarships are capped, reducing parent choice, and the requirement that providers reach a certain level of quality is pushed further out. So that the early, so the youngsters of today may not get that quality that they deserve and that we promised them when we established the early learning scholarship program. And the $50 million in this voluntary pre-K school readiness plus program, members remember, that's one-time money. That's one-time money because we're saying we're not willing to commit to a strategy to close the achievement gap. We'll ask school districts to set up programs with no promise that two years from today they'll have funding for those programs, for those rooms, for that, for those toys, for those blocks, for those desks, for those teachers and aides. And more importantly, we'll tell that four-year-old of today that you get an opportunity for early childhood, pre-kindergarten, but your younger brother or sister doesn't. We're just not willing to make that commitment. Closing the achievement gap is going to be hard work. It took us a long time to get here in many different factors. It's going to take us time to close the gap, but that sense of urgency we should all feel needs to be built on smart strategies that we commit ourselves to and that we carry And we don't have that here. It requires persistence, not one-time money, not reductions in choice, not reductions in quality. Minnesota students and families need and deserve more. I urge your red vote. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Pryor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. All right, it's 2%. It's 2% because there were two bills that were not passed into law, and there was negotiations with the governor. So this body passed bills that did not fund public education, and that should be a phrase that we keep track of, funding public education. Through negotiations with the governor, we brought the formula up to 2%, and that is a victory for Governor Dayton. So that's where I'll start, by congratulating Governor Dayton for doing the very minimum that he could get out of this body. And I think that's what it is. Because what we're talking about is public education. For me, that is my core value. And that's the first thing that really I talked about on the floor, was why public education was important to me and my family. And so I know that that's why I am here on this floor, is because that's my belief and that's my core value, and it reflects my district. And we can talk about what public education is. Public education is every child. The child with special needs, the child with mental illness that acts out in class, the child that is hungry and doesn't have food at home, the child that is really different in so many different ways. And they're all in the same classroom together. And that's a choice my family made when we moved to Austin, Minnesota, was to have a quality education for all of those kids. That's the choice my husband and I made when we moved back to Minnesota to bring up our kids in a public school. And Representative Davney, when we first talked about this bill the first time, and that was a long time ago, I know, he talked about that beautiful scene where you have the doctor's child, and that's my child, sitting next to the poor kid that's being brought up by a single mom. And that was my kid's classroom, because they were the single moms and the people on food stamps. And that was, but this was happening, and they were getting a quality education, because that is what we were committed to and have always been committed to. But that's also what's at risk in this session. So we brought it up to the start, the very minimum, the 2% on the formula. And my school district said the 2% on the formula was the most important thing to get. And so that's what I've been fighting for and what I have talked about every time I stood up in this and talked about this bill, is the 2% on the formula. Is that okay? All right. It's a little loud. All right. But what they also asked for was the money for mental health, because right now, in our schools right now, we have a crisis where we are recognizing mental illness. And I can tell a story about one of my constituents, a high school student, that came up to me, and she said, "I'm so glad you got elected because you listened to me about the crisis of mental illness in our high school." And she told me the story about she went to see, she wanted to see a counselor because she was really concerned about her health, her mental health. And when she went in to get an appointment to talk to the counselor, they said, "Well, is it an emergency? Because really, we don't have an appointment for another couple of weeks. But if it's an emergency, you can come in." So she would have to say to this administrative person, "Yes, it's an emergency, I'm really sick, and I have a mental illness." And that was really hard to say. But that was what she was forced to say, because we don't have counselors in the schools. So she's looking to me to speak for her about the importance of mental health and counselors in our public schools. Another point that I need to talk about, too, is we, in this body, we've talked about how to attract teachers, how to keep teachers. Well, one way you can keep teachers in school, and my friend, my teacher friend over there will talk about all of those, all of those teachers, certified teachers, that are not in classrooms right now. And one reason is they feel like we're not keeping our promises to them. And if we don't fund their retirement, we're not keeping our promises. So if there's no pension money in this bill, we're not attracting teachers, we're not supporting teachers, we're not encouraging them to stay in the classroom. So I think that's another issue with the bill. So there's a big difference in what the governor proposed originally in his budget for public education and how this bill is coming in. But I think we did get the bottom line, which gives our schools the maximum amount of flexibility. We gave them the 2% on the formula, and for that, we can only thank Governor Dayton.
The member from Dakota, Representative Mae Quaid.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry, there's dirty fries on the floor, it's been a long day. So my filter is gone, right? There's no kudos or pats on the back for this bill. It took a special session to get 2% on the formula, no pats on the back. It took a special session to get funding for the BIE schools, there's no pat on the back for that. So we got 2% on the formula, that's barely inflation, if that. We need to invest in our schools, not keep the lights on. We froze it, great. VPK, we unfunded it. Okay, we're freezing it where it's at right now, there's no pats on the back for that. I will vote for this bill because it has the funding, the very bare minimum that we asked for. But we talk about the teacher shortage and the people who aren't staying in the classrooms and those who leave the first three years of teaching. And as we go into the schools and we hear that there's mental health crises and housing unstable and food unstable and cultural trauma and all of these issues in schools, and we do the bare minimum, and we wonder why the people that we put all of this in their classrooms with are leaving. Well, that's why, because we're not taking care of it. And then we have the teachers, the ones that we ask to be the social workers and the nurses, right? And the educators and the food providers and all of these different things, and then we wonder why we have the achievement gap, when we don't address it, when we don't address the very things they ask us to do, fund their pensions, which is their money that they earned, we put in LIFO, which they oppose. When you do something for us, without us, you do it to us. We're doing this to teachers, against their wishes, their expressed wishes. And we wonder why they're leaving. This is why. We can't pretend like we don't know why, we can't pretend like we don't hear them when they fill our rotunda and ask us specifically to not do this. There are no pats on the back for this bill. We do not get kudos for going into a special session and 30 hours later, doing the bare minimum for our public education, for our schools, for our students, and for our teachers.
Any further discussion on the bill? The member from Hennepin, Representative Loon.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Just very, very briefly, I want to thank the members who will be voting green for this. I understand that there may be those with concerns. No bill is probably going to cover everything you would want, but I just have to respond on a couple of quick things. With regards to the formula, I have introduced two bills in this body asking for 2% and 2%, and I know that there is no one in this body, regardless of side of the aisle, that is not pleased about that outcome. And I think it would be, it is a misstatement to say that is only because of Governor Dayton. There was definitely negotiations that went on in this, compromises were made, including compromises to things that we all hold as very important in our education. But what's most important is that we found a way to bridge those gaps and to come together to do what is right for our kids. And that's what's in here. And that includes the change to the unrequested leave of absence. I understand that the teachers' union, Education Minnesota, is opposed. We clearly understand that. But you know who supports that? People who have had kids in classrooms who have seen brilliant young teachers who have transformed their children's lives get laid off. For others, not because of their merit, it's because their merit means absolutely nothing in our current system. When Minnesota is one of only six states with this system, and some states will not allow seniority be considered because a merit-based program makes more sense, the least we could do, the sensible approach that respects the fact that teachers are union members and they bargain collectively, is to say, use the collective bargaining process to determine your layoff system, what happens if there's a ULA. In my mind, that is incredibly respectful of teachers, of the bargaining units, and of the responsibility of every local school district to come up with their own plan. That's how we're respecting teachers and parents and schools and kids in this bill. And I'm pleased that Governor Dayton was able to see that as well. So, members, there's a lot of good stuff to support in this bill. I know you're not maybe all going to like everything in it, but let's come together, let's support it, let's fund our schools. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. The clerk will close the roll. There being 79 ayes and 54 nays, the bill is passed as amended and its title agreed to. Introduction of Bills. The following House files have been offered for introduction today. The chief clerk will report the House files and give them their first reading.
Introduction of First Reading of House File Number Three.
First Reading, House File Number Three. There is a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article Four, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Torkelson moves that the rule therein be suspended and in urgency be declared, that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number Three be given its second, third readings be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize the member from Brown, Representative Torkelson, to explain the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is my motion.
Any discussion on the Torkelson motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails, and the clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second Reading, House File Number Three.
Second reading. There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third Reading, House File Number Three.
Third reading.
Mr. Speaker, I was standing.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Teason.
I was standing to offer an amendment before you went to third reading.
There are no amendments filed at the desk, Representative Teason.
There don't need to be.
We're on third reading. Recognize the member from Brown, Representative Torkelson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would move that we lay House File Three on the table.
Representative Torkelson moves that we lay House File Number Three on the table. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails, and House File Three is laid on the table.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
State your point of parliamentary inquiry.
Mr. Speaker, we have an agreement to be in special session until 7:00 a.m. and you sought a new agreement to have a second special session commencing at 7:00. We don't have a new agreement to commence at 7:00. So is this special session that we are currently in going to end pursuant to the agreement that you signed at 7:00 a.m.?
Representative Hortman, the end of the legislative day is at 7:00, so we would have to adjourn this legislative day before 7:00 a.m.
Mr. Speaker, point of parliamentary inquiry.
State your point of parliamentary inquiry.
What is your intention regarding 7:01 a.m.? Because we do not have an agreement to be in special session beyond 7:01.
As the presiding officer, I only respond to the motions that are made from the body and the votes that are taken here in the body. So it's not up to me whether we go beyond 7:01 or come back at 7:01. If there's a motion made, we'll certainly handle that in the way we handle all motions in the House. And it's up to the will of the body.
Mr. Speaker, would Majority Leader Peppin yield to a question?
She will yield. Representative Hortman.
Majority Leader Peppin, what is your intention will occur at 7:01? We have a signed agreement. I realize that you didn't sign the agreement, but Speaker Kurt Doutt did. And the agreement indicates, in the last sentence, I have a copy. Under this agreement, the first special session will conclude within one legislative day, and the bodies will adjourn the special session no later than 7:00 a.m. on May 24, 2017. And when we met with reporters following the reaching of this agreement and upon distributing it to reporters, I think it was an Associated Press reporter or who is now at NPR, who asked, "What happens if you don't finish by then?" And my understanding was that both the speaker and the Majority Leader of the Senate, you were there, you heard also, said that we wouldn't have to come back to the governor's office to get a new agreement. So my question is, what is your intention at 7:01 a.m. today? Do you plan to abide by the agreement or break the agreement?
The member from Hennepin, Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and Representative Hortman. Well, I think that's a very interesting question that you have, considering you've already violated the agreement. And I will guide you to Point Three, where part of the agreement was, no other votes will be permitted and no other bills, other than those listed above, will be posted. As you recall, we took your side, violated the agreement, and there were votes taken on amendments that you permitted on your side in violation of the agreement. So I would say that it's a very interesting question that you have, considering that you've already yourself violated the agreement.
Well, Madam Majority Leader, there is not a single term of this agreement that has been broken yet. Under the agreement, the leaders agreed they would not support amendments. I did not support a single amendment. The leaders agreed that the bills would be given three... The rule requiring three readings on three separate days would be suspended. It was suspended in each occasion that it was raised. And so what I'm saying to you, Representative Peppin, is that I have fulfilled 100% of my obligations under this agreement. And I'm asking you if you intend to fulfill yours.
She will yield. Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, Representative Hortman, we've already went through this. You violated the amendment. You brought forward amendments on your side where it says, "No other votes will be permitted and no other bills." We only vote on two different types of things here, bills and amendments to bills. So no other votes means votes on amendments, which your side brought forward. So I would say that between that and between the fact that, I guess I could turn and ask you a question. I know you have the floor. But Representative Hortman, I understand you to be the leader of your caucus. And earlier, when we had this discussion, you said you only stood for yourself. So your understanding was that you only stand for yourself in this agreement. So I guess if you only represent yourself, I guess my question would be, then who is the leader of the caucus who speaks on behalf of the caucus in order to sign an agreement?
The member from Hennepin, Representative Hortman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Representative Peppin. There is not a single provision of this agreement that I have violated. And you can point to no provision of this agreement that I have violated. We have fulfilled every obligation we made under here. The first vote that we took on an amendment was an amendment offered by Representative Juskowski. So there's not a single sentence of this agreement that I have violated. But my question to you, and I think what the people of Minnesota would really like to know, is what are you going to do at 7:01 a.m.? Are you going to abide by the agreement that your speaker signed? Does he represent your caucus? Is he capable of forming a binding agreement? Or do you have a different plan at 7:01?
She will yield. Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and Representative Hortman. Well, you violated the agreement first. I know you're an attorney. I'm not sure what you think that means. But I would just say that I would suggest that we do a... Perhaps we have a little discussion. I was at a press conference, and I believe what was said was that if the deal wasn't done, wasn't completely done, but all parties involved, meaning the administration and the leaders of both caucuses, had an agreement. I believe what I had heard was that the governor would be willing to potentially go beyond the time period. I'm not sure if that still holds up anymore since you've already violated the agreement. That might be a discussion we can have later.
Representative Hortman.
I think I can confidently predict that nobody in the state of Minnesota cares whether you think I violated the agreement first or not. But I think what the people of Minnesota believe is that they would like to know what's happening in the Minnesota Legislature at 7:01 a.m. And I'm just asking you to share with the body what happens here at 7:01 a.m.
She will yield. Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Representative Hortman. Well, we have an agreement to be here until 7:00. And I think since the violation was... The agreement was violated. I think, and since I think the rules of the Constitution say something about... And I'd have to look there. It's been a long night. But I think there's something in the Constitution about that there's one person who gets to call a special session. And I believe that that's the governor of the state of Minnesota. And I believe that there's only one group that can close a special session and adjourn a special session. And that is the legislature, Representative Hortman. I hope that answers your question.
Representative Hortman.
I guess we'll just have to wait and see what happens at 7:01, since it is 6:30 in the morning. We are in the Minnesota House of Representatives, and the majority party is not interested in telling the minority caucus or the people of Minnesota what's going to happen 31 minutes from now.
Introduction of Bills. The following House files have been offered for introduction today. The chief clerk will report the House files and give them their first reading.
Introduction of First Reading of House File Number Four.
First Reading, House File Number Four.
House File Number Four is being referred to the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration.
First reading. The member from Hennepin, Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Republican members, we will caucus immediately after we adjourn. And, Mr. Speaker, I move that when the House adjourns today, it re-adjourn until Wednesday, May 24, 2017, at 7:01 a.m.
Roll call.
Roll call has been requested. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Peppin moves that when the House adjourns today, it adjourns until 7:01. it adjourns until 7:01 a.m. Wednesday, May 24, 2017.
Mr. Speaker.
It's a non-debatable motion. The clerk will take the roll. The clerk will close the roll. There being 77 ayes and 55 nays, the motion prevails. Representative Peppin.
I move that the House do now adjourn.
Representative Peppin moves that the House do now adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion prevails, and the House stands adjourned until 7:01 a.m. on Wednesday, May 24, 2017.